Good evening and welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Committee of the Whole Meeting for August 8th, 2016. President Burton is unable to attend our meeting this evening, so as Vice President, I will be presiding. As stated, this is a Committee of the Whole Meeting. It is a non-voting meeting. At our Committee of the Whole Meetings, the Board will meet in each of its six committees, which are the Finance Committee, the Building and Site Committee, the Personnel Committee, the Curriculum Committee, the Legislative Committee, and the Policy Committee. Board members chair each of those committee meetings, and they will be leading that portion of the agenda. So you will be seeing me turn over the meeting to each of the chairs when we have those specific committee meetings. The Committee of the Whole Meeting is a discussion or a question period for the Board members as we go over each of the items on the agenda. Then, at the end of the discussion or the questions, the Board decides where they will place that item in the future. Will it be in the next regular meeting, which is a voting meeting, which we will vote on that item? Or if it warrants more discussion or answers to questions, it will be placed on future committee meetings. I'd like to take a minute to introduce the people that are with us tonight. Of course, we have our wonderful Superintendent, Mrs. Andrea Oquus, and we have her cabinet that is seated behind me. Mrs. Lisa Abbey will help in a couple of our meetings today. She will assist. She is the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services and Operations, and she will assist -- give us a wave, Mrs. Abbey. She will assist with our Finance Committee and our Building and Site Committee today. And Mr. Phil Francis, who is sitting at the end of the table, will help us with the Personnel Committee today, and he is the Assistant Director of Human Resources. And then the other people that you see at the table are Mrs. Sheila Ellis, and she's waving at this time, and she is Chief Academic Officer. And next to her is Cindy Scott, who is the Director of Elementary Programs and District Services. And we thank them for taking their time to be with us today, and they're always of great assistance if we have further questions. They help us out with that. So, if you'd like to follow along with our agenda or on our agenda, those of you that are present in our audience, and thank you so much for attending our meeting today. We do have agendas if you don't have one, and they're out in the hallway. Or if you're following along at home, you can visit our website at www.livoniapublicschools.org. And if you hit the School Board tab, that will lead you to our agendas. We will begin with Audience Communication. If you notice, that's the first item on our agenda. It's at this time that the Board sets aside to hear comments from the community, and this is not a dialogue meant to be a dialogue with the Board or a question and answer session. So if we don't make a comment at the end of your comments, we're not being rude and we're not ignoring you. It's just our practice that we don't make comments. It's just for you to give us your comments. But if you are interested in getting feedback, please indicate so, and you will receive a response, usually a written response in a timely fashion. So if anyone is interested in speaking to the Board tonight, will you please fill out a yellow -- a yellow. I'm colorblind. A blue Audience Communication form, and make sure that I get it, and I will call you to address this at this time. We do have a policy that Audience Communication is three minutes, and Mr. Johnson is our official timekeeper. At the end of three minutes, you will hear a bell or a chime, and we ask that you just be respectful and conclude your statements at that time. Okay? So we'll start with Audience Communication. And Laurel, is it Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay. Would you please come and sit in front of the microphone?
Wherever you're comfortable. The middle one will probably catch your voice the best for the microphone.
Hi.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Laurel Stevenson. I'm a parent of two children. One is attending first grade at Cass Elementary School this year, and the other one would start in the fall of 2017. I am a Cass graduate myself, as are my three siblings. I've had an excellent, excellent educational career as a result, I believe, of attending Cass, and it has come to my attention now that Cass could potentially be closed. I'd like to better understand how Livonia Public Schools is making this decision. I have seen the Plant Moran Study and looked at the utilization numbers. However, it was my understanding that when Livonia put out the bond proposal back in 2013, and it passed, that every school would be touched by this money, and $2.6 million would go into renovations for Cass. So I'd like to understand why Cass might potentially be closed now, and what might happen to that $2.6 million, how it might be reallocated. And I also would just like to say that I would be hesitant to vote for any future bond proposals for Livonia Public Schools if this is what might happen when Livonia Public Schools is saying that they're going to use their money in this way and then essentially doing a bait and switch, it feels like. So I'll just be frank with you. So I would really like to see Cass stay open. It's a wonderful school, a wonderful community, and I think it produces a lot of excellent students and citizens in Livonia. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adoreen Floyd.
Hi there.
Hi. Good evening.
How are you all doing?
We're good. How are you?
I'm okay. Well, I just wanted to say personally, I just moved to Livonia in April, and we specifically chose the area we wanted to move to because of the school ratings. And I have a daughter who's 18 months old, and we specifically wanted to move to a better area. We lived in Garden City where the school ratings were not good. And so I kind of feel like it really should be looked at whether it's a good idea to close a school that has really good ratings, because, you know, from my experience, being in Garden City, the property values drop a lot when you don't have good ratings for your schools. And, you know, we specifically went into the best area we could possibly afford so that we could get our kids into the best possible schools. And I'm just wondering, like, if everything has really been looked at, like, the cost of busing kids, you know, the cost of, you know, all the other things that go with, like, moving, you know, your kids all the way to a different area. You know, we're within walking distance of Cass. And I just wonder if everything has really been looked at as far as possible funding options, like grants, that could possibly help with funding if there's, like, that much money that really needs to really be made up, you know, to keep it open. So we really love Livonia, and we love the neighborhood, and we really want to keep our kid close to us and, you know, in a close school to our home. So I hope you guys consider all options when you make your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Ma'am, would you fill out a blue slip and please come up and state your full name, and then you can hand that in.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Marie Greenly, and I've lived in a block from Cass for 39 years. My son's attended there, and they spoke very well of the school. My son was a school teacher and is a principal now. The school in question, this Cass Elementary, this is -- I don't know how the other schools in the district are situated, but this is a unique situation where this school sits in the middle of a subdivision. And I know they've had this plant, I forget the whole name, that have looked at the -- how many kids are attending and what the future projections are on that school. But I'm wondering if we took the time, the citizens, to go house to house and ask them, if there were -- if we, if by some magic or some miracle, we came up with 100 more students than those statistics gave you, would it make a difference? And I understand the idea of spending $2 or $3 million on a school that potentially later on would close, and the citizens would say, "The taxpayers, you squandered $2 million of our money when you could see the projection showed you just didn't have enough students there." But I think it deserves a further look to make sure, to really make sure, that there aren't enough that would be coming to that school within five years. I know they're saying that maybe perhaps they would have the numbers in 10 years, but that doesn't seem to make sense to spend that kind of money when you know that school is going to be waiting, 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 and, you know, to keep that school going. But on the other hand, if that school, I don't know if you can bring in a preschool in there. I've heard that there was talk of Dickerson or something and kind of pulling it all together and just having it located in one place. But I don't know what else we could do with that school. But if that school ends up that it has to be closed, I have to say, I would really like to know what the school, who owns the school? Who owns it? And what, are you just going to leave that school sitting there? It would be a sorry -- it would absolutely be a detriment to that neighborhood to just leave an empty school sitting there like that. So I would like to know if that school would be torn down, what you would put there, if you could bring in someone that was interested in developing it, perhaps a 55-year-old and older, a group of ranches. It's got a nice piece of property there that you would develop it, sell it to a developer. Then, and the biggest question I have, and why I came here tonight, is I really am hoping and praying that you'll give us your solemn word that you will not sell that to a charter school, because we know that's what they did in Detroit. They did that in Dearborn Heights, where I came from. I have friends that live in Oakland County, and they did that also. And I certainly wouldn't want to see a charter school go in there in competition to our very good public schools. So that's what I'd like to know, is if you, if I could get some information on that, what would you do with that school? And do we have any kind of security in knowing that you would not make that a charter school?
Thank you. Is there anyone else interested in speaking? Ma'am, could you turn in your blue form and come up to the table and state your name and your full name?
I can take it for you.
Yeah. We -- thank you. Good evening. You may go ahead. Want to state your name?
I'm Dot Bobrowitz. I'm a dinosaur from Burton Hollow. I'm one of the originals, so there's very few of us left. Burton Hollow is being repopulated with families. The houses are built for families. And I have to tell you that, at my age, I'm tired of being politically correct, and I call them as I sees them, so here we go. We, the people of Burton Hollow, voted for the school money with the understanding that we were paying for our kids and our school, not every other school in Livonia except Cass. The will of the taxpayers is being thwarted here. Point two: This whole project is unnecessary. It does not need to happen. The State of Michigan suggests closing, but that does not mean that we have to do it. The money is being spent exactly as the voters intended it to be used. I suggest that the State keeps out of our school system. Consider what a mess the State's school system has done, has become, excuse me on that one, because of meddling by the so-called experts at the state level. Ignore the State. Leave things as they are. Give Cass time to repopulate. And especially keep it open for the special needs kids. My sister was Downs, severely retarded, and this is back in the days of the cave, but my mother and my father had nowhere to turn to help her, to raise her. It wasn't until she went into a state institution, which was a fantastic place. My sister blossomed. She was into classes. Her medical was taken care of. The children that are sort of on the short end here, they need to have a school and a teacher and a whole program for them in a safe place. Once they get used to a place, it really sets them back to be sent somewhere else and start all over again somewhere else, and all the problems they have come to the surface again. You know what happened when the governor closed the mental institutions in the State of Michigan some years ago? That's what I am talking about when I'm saying, keep the State out of our schools. They're meddling. They don't know what they're doing. Let us have our schools the way we are handling them now. Right now, Cass is low. That's because the space between when I moved in here and Memorial Day, 1963, on my half of the block, there were 50 kids. Halloween was unbelievable. Those kids, my baby is 52 right now. So you can see where the new ones are moving in. There is very few of us dinosaurs left, and the ability to watch your kids walk to school is just wonderful. When I was, when we were looking for housing here, we were, my husband was driving me back to Willow Run Airport to catch an airplane to fly back to Hopkins in Cleveland, and on the, you had to go there through Six Mile. And on the side of the road, there was a great big sign, uh-huh, hey, let's look at this. Okay. We found our house. You go out the door, you go down the block, and there's a sign, "Future Home of Cass School." Sold. Cass School is a key ingredient to Burton Hollow subdivision. Just give it time.
Sir, will you please come up to the table and state your full name?
My name is Kevin Arnold. I'm a resident of Burton Hollow. My daughter Caitlin currently will be going to first grade at Cass Elementary. In another year, my second daughter Emma will be hopefully going to Cass Elementary for kindergarten. Several years ago, when me and my wife were expecting our second child, Emma, we started looking for a home, and my wife gave me special criteria. You know, she wanted these features of the house, this area of the house, you know, where the house would be located. And it took me a little while to figure out she wanted Cass Elementary. She wanted Cass Elementary because it's a quality elementary school. You know, she wanted Burton Hollow because it's a great subdivision. We found a house. We found out that our neighbors, who have a little girl the same age as my daughter Caitlin, they moved there so their daughter can go to, and their son can go to, Cass Elementary. Their brother and sister-in-law just bought a house across the way so their child can go to Cass Elementary. Our neighbor's neighbor, the family behind us, my buddy at work, all moved to where they moved to, in Livonia. Not just Livonia, but the Cass School, Elementary School District of Livonia, so that their children can go to a quality elementary school to start their education. There's been talk of it closing, as you've heard, and there's been meetings, and I just don't understand how, you know, I guess it's Cass Elementary or another elementary school that they're looking at, you guys are looking at closing, possibly. I just don't understand why you would consider closing a high-rated elementary school, that if you close a high-rated elementary school over one that is struggling and obviously needs improvement in the educational system there, as opposed to just, you know, construction costs, to bring it up to the quality that Cass already has. I just don't understand why we would be considering closing a higher-rated school that would weaken all of Livonia Public Schools' elementary system. So if someone could explain that to me, why we would want to close a school that would weaken the school district and opt for one that is, you know, a lower-rated school, I would really like to know why. Don't have to answer now, can answer later, but I think you owe the citizens of Livonia, the taxpayers, the parents, these people behind me, an explanation of why you would want to close a higher-rated school that would weaken the elementary education of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to participate in Audience Communication? No. I think we need to move on. Thank you. Sir, are you interested?
Can I still speak?
Yes. You, will you?
When you're done, do you mind filling out a statement?
Yes. And please state your full name.
My name is Jeff Schiller. I am a new resident to Michigan, Livonia, and Burton Hollow. My family and I moved in a little over three years ago, and as the current theme of the rest of the citizens that spoke before me, it's part of the decision process when looking at a home, our schools and the school district. And Cass Elementary School, the school scoring system, and the Livonia Public Schools rated very highly for myself and for my kids. When making the decision, we could have chose Plymouth Canton, Northville, Novi, Birmingham, Troy, any of the other surrounding schools and school districts, but we chose Livonia and we chose Burton Hollow because of the neighborhood elementary school. So first and foremost, so I have a new kindergarten student coming this fall, and her younger daughter will be starting in two years. So we knew, moving into it, that we wanted the convenience of a closed school in the neighborhood. After reviewing a lot of your documents that you've posted on your website from past committee board meetings, as well as the study, I would challenge the Board to have a meeting solely on Cass Elementary School to educate us as parents, as taxpayers, on the decision process. It seems a lot of changes have occurred over the last couple of months. Specifically, I think back in May, you called the lot size of the school too small. The following meeting, it was large, but landlocked. So I point that out as some inconsistencies on, does the plan or the Board think it's too small, or is it landlocked, or is it both? When you look at some of the data, you know, Randolph was $2.8 million of the bond used on a school that's 49 percent utilized, which is one of the decisions and one of the criteria that the State looks like at for schools to be utilized. Cass Elementary was 69 percent, right? And they want to be 80 to 90 percent. So you're choosing a school that's highly rated, it's one of the top three or four elementary schools when it comes to utilization, and it's around the same average of bond use or earmarked for bond use as the rest of elementary schools. So again, I'd like to challenge the Board and the committee members here to have a sole meeting just to discuss the findings, so we can understand better on the thought process, the timing of decision, as well as future consideration of keeping the school open. So thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. Good evening.
Yeah, that's okay.
It's okay. My name is Mary Kennedy. I grew up in Livonia and recently moved back over the winter to Livonia after spending 10 years in Chicago. My husband and I have been living with my grandfather in Livonia while we searched specifically in Cass Elementary and Hoover Elementary for a home, which we purchased in June. I would like to reiterate the past two questioners or speakers to, one, kind of challenge the data. I've looked at it a little bit, haven't been able to review it a lot, but would like to challenge the Board members to look at the data and educate us. And secondly, to not only educate the neighborhood, but also to reconsider the Burton Hollow-Cass neighborhood and Cass School Elementary. We're just starting our family, and there are elementary schools that have obvious strengths, whether it's the teachers, the group. Cass, I believe, is one of those. It is a strong elementary school. It pulled us to Livonia over other neighboring cities, and specifically for this elementary school. And to break it up and to move those teachers and students other places rather than possibly bringing all their kids to the school, I think is something that should be reconsidered.
Thank you. Mary Kennedy?
Yep.
Thank you. Any others? Sir?
You have a very patient co-speaker.
She did excellent.
Yes, she did.
I left mine at home.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dan Phillips. I live at 35747 Bennett Street in Livonia. My wife and I purchased the home approximately two years ago. Prior to that, we lived on Country Club, south of Five Mile. We made the decision to move into the Cass Elementary School District because we looked at the numbers, and we wanted to do what's best for our family and for our children. I can tell you, Mrs. Phillips and I are single-handedly trying to pull the numbers up for Cass. We have a four-year-old daughter, we have a three-year-old daughter, and we have a three-month-old daughter.
You are.
So I can tell you that is very important to us as parents, and those of you that are parents, the importance of education in the young lives of our children. school. And to break it up and to move those teachers and students other places rather than possibly bringing all their kids to the school, I think is something that should be reconsidered.
Thank you. Mary, was your last name?
Pardon?
Mary Kennedy?
Yep.
Thank you. Any others? Sir?
You have a very patient co-speaker.
She did excellent.
Yes, she did.
I left mine at home.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dan Phillips. I live at 35747 Bennett Street in Livonia. My wife and I purchased the home approximately two years ago. Prior to that, we lived on Country Club, south of Five Mile. We made the decision to move into the Cass Elementary School District because we, we looked at the numbers and we wanted to do what's best for our family and for our children. I can tell you, Mrs. Phillips and I are single-handedly trying to pull the numbers up for Cass. We have, we have a four-year-old daughter, we have a three-year-old daughter, and we have a three-month-old daughter.
You are.
So-
Thank you.
So I can tell you that is very important to us as parents and those of you that are parents, the importance of education in the young lives of our children, and the importance of strong schools. Myself and my wife are both products of Livonia Public Schools. I have a twin sister who is a special education administrator, is a product of Livonia Public Schools. We believe in Livonia Public Schools. We approved the bond two years ago, thinking that it would help to keep Cass Elementary going, to give it the renovations that it requires, and to help it to continue to be successful as it has been up to today. I think it's a gem. I think it would be a terrible decision to close it, and I think with my fellow citizens, we're in support of keeping it open. And I please ask you guys to carefully think about keeping it open and not getting rid of one of the gems of Livonia Public Schools. Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Do I see anyone else? Okay, I, oh, sir, please come up to the table. Thank you. Please state your full name.
Sure.
My name is Gary Howell. I live in Livonia in the Nottingham West subdivision, which is just across Six Mile. Again, just like a lot of the parents that are here today, we moved in into the subdivision specifically for Cass. And, and the numbers speak for themselves, right? We're, we're crazy about Cass, you know, the mix of teachers and families and community there. The school just works. But the big, but the big question like that I have, that, that the man spoke about two or three people ago, talk about challenging the board to have a meeting to really explain those results to us, right? Every time we drive into Livonia, we see this sign that says Families First. And it's my opinion that the way that this study has gone, and it's, the very fact that Cass is even on the chopping block, is not putting families first. And the things that you don't see on a report are the number of families who move into the district. It's not just about population rate, people having kids, stuff like that. Cass draws families to Livonia, and, and increases tax base, and it's all this other stuff. So, so my point is, just a lot like the gentleman said, I would like to have a meeting specifically to explain the report. Secondly, to go along with that, I get the feeling that, that the decision has already been made. When we see, when we see, when we see, when we see plans about where the students are going to go, the five plans about where they might go, and, and I feel like, again, you're not putting families first. Families have to plan for where their children are going to go. We need to plan for pickup. We need to plan, okay, plan our drop off. And all this stuff, just up in the air, we don't know like what's going to happen for next year. It, it's a huge hindrance, okay? Like, I have a third grader at Cass and a kindergartner now, and this is the worst time for me because my kindergartner is going to start Cass, potentially have to switch schools into first grade. Then my third grader is going to be at Cass for third grade, she won't get to finish her fourth grade, she's going to have to switch schools to, to switch schools again for the fifth, sixth. And again, it's just bad timing. I don't feel like it's transparent, and I would like to just have some more information about what's going on here. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, I will close that portion of audience communication.
Yeah, but Vice President Laura, I, if I can make a request to Mrs. Oquus.
Sure.
You, you had, in our last meeting, made some clarifying statements about the process. And just hearing, speaking with people last weekend, I think people are really confused about what the process is. You know, I think some people have asked, are under the assumption there's a recommendation to close Cass, where we have not seen anything like that. So could you just explain briefly kind of what is going on with the process?
Sure.
Just so there's a little bit of more clarity.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. And I think that might be helpful, too, because I, I know that, first of all, a lot of good questions asked tonight, and we appreciate your advocacy for, for Cass and for Livonia Public Schools. We love our school district, too, and each of our schools. We're, we're proud of each and every one of them, and, and we know Cass has a, has a special place in your heart, so thank you for coming out tonight. And thanks for a little bit of the history about Burton Hollow. That was, that was good to hear, too. So that, yeah, that's a, it's a good, it's a probably a good segue to see where we are. Our team, and some of you may know this, so I apologize if some of this is repeat information from what you've heard. The studies that were completed last, last year that some of, some of the folks had, we had referred to by Plant, Mar, and Cressa, there was a, two separate studies done, one on enrollment and one on facility use. And so the enrollment projections gave us projections out through 2020 by attendance area, by level, by grade, and then by the entire district. And then the facility use was also studied at each and every school, and we were given information literally down to the closets, the rooms, et cetera, and how they're currently utilized. Once that information was completed, we had a really significant amount of data to review. And the folks that had completed the studies are truly experts in that field, and we really felt that having a, a third party be able to give us the, the raw data was very important. But then, we know this is an important, a really important topic for the Board of Education and for our district, and certainly one, you know, we know is, is very important to all of you. So we thought it was important to have folks come together that represent our different employee groups, our different parent groups, organizations. And we've put together a large team of about 45 people that have spent time since the studies came out, so they've been together since, think about mid-April, Ms. Abbey?
Correct.
Yeah. Ms. Abbey and Mr. Archibald are co-chairing this team, and they were asked to take a look at all of that data in relation to the bond work yet to be completed. So when the bond was passed, it was to be completed in five phases, or five years. So we call each summer a phase. We're in phase three right now. And so one of the things that we had talked about this fall was a concern about where our enrollment decline has been over the past years since the bond, or since the bond was passed in 2013. And the question came, would we continue to need every single one of our schools and facilities moving forward? And I think someone had mentioned a question that had come up here a number of times by the board, which is, do we still need to renovate every single school based on the loss of enrollment we've had over the past number of years, and looking at the enrollment going forward? So the committee began their work, and so many of the questions you asked are the, are the types of questions that they absolutely need to be delving through, whether it's transporting, whether it's utilization, whether it's enrollment projections. Each of those pieces are, are reams and reams of data in and of, in and of themselves. And so they've worked through, through April, May, and then the beginning of June. And one of the things that we realized pretty quickly on was, it was, the complexity of it required more time. And it's, this is just too important of a decision to make, not just for Cass, but for our whole district. And before the committee makes any determination of, should any schools be closed, should any school communities be consolidated? If so, where might that be? What might that look like? And then what would be the rationale for doing so? What would be the impact, human, financial, community-wise? So to pull all of that information together is a significant undertaking for, for these folks. And again, we have every school represented, we have parents, community members, teachers, principals, and they are taking their work very, very seriously. They know that each of our school communities are passionate about their school and feel very strongly about them, and so certainly we understand that as well. They'll continue, they'll come back to their work in the beginning of September. Right now, most of our folks are on, on summer recess, so our, a majority of the committee are folks that are not year-round people. So while we've continued some work here during the summer appropriately, so the, the committee will reconvene the week of September 12th and continue on with their work. There is quite a bit left to study, as you've, as you've identified. And so just so you know, as we respond to some of these questions that you've raised this evening, we may be able to respond immediately to a couple of them. There may be some that are going to require additional study from the committee before any recommendations would be brought forward to the board. And then the process for that would be, the committee would make recommendations, and we certainly would have open meetings to again review all of the data related to this, all of the impact and the rationale. And then the board would have an opportunity to publicly deliberate themselves, but then we would also hold community forums, so that individual school communities or the district as a whole would be able to weigh in on that prior to any decision being made by the board. So although I know folks are probably anxious for a, a final determination, this is something we want to get right, and we really don't want to rush that work. So we anticipate the committee probably still has, you know, I don't want to harden, you know, you know, give a, an exact guess. I would assume they probably have a couple of months left still of their work to do, to do their due diligence. And many of the questions you raised, but, but we have as many of those, if not more, believe it or not, on, on our list that we continue to take a look at. We also want to take a look at our fall enrollment and how that comes in in comparison to the enrollment study completed by Plant, Mar, and Cressa. And so there are so many different factors, so we're not quite there yet. We certainly welcome you to attend our meetings. We meet pretty much every Monday, so every once in a while, there's a Monday off. But this topic will not come before the board in the next couple of meetings. You're always welcome to attend, you're always welcome to address the board. I would invite you to contact myself, or Ms. Abbey, or Mr. Archibald if there are specific things that you would like us to be bringing to the committee to take a look at. I've garnered some of these questions, and then we go back through and re-watch these meetings so that we can make sure we've answered your questions. But if you want to take a look at your blue slip, add anything else specifically that you think is important for the committee to, to take a look at or that you would like to know, please feel free to do that. So that's just a little bit of an update on where we are. I hope that's, I hope that's helpful. And I, I just again want to commend the team for the work they're doing. It's hard work, and they're, they're, again, they're taking this very, very seriously, and we also know for our community, this is, this is extremely, extremely important. So we'll continue to provide updates on our, on our website, but again, you're welcome to contact our committee co-chairs in the interim if you have questions or things that you think we need to be thinking about. Please don't hesitate to do that, and you don't have to wait for a meeting to share that with us, so.
Okay? All right.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquus.
You're welcome. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, Vice President Laura. I know typically we don't respond during audience, audience communication. We need time to consider. You've noticed that we've taken notes on things that you've said because it is that important to us. But I would like to say something that I think people need to hear. When we first started the improvements based on the bond issue, it became a five-year plan, and we had to divide the schools into these five years. Engineers and construction managers went through every single school, and they determined which schools went in which year. Cass and its sister school, Taylor, which is now Neji Ero, are the two most recently constructed schools in Livonia. They were built in 1968 and 1969, respectively. The other schools were built in the 50s, and they were in terrible shape. So the schools that were put in the first and second and third years were the ones in most desperate need of attention. The schools that were put in the fifth year were the most recent schools, Cass and Neji Ero, as well as schools that had been most recently renovated, like Webster. Somewhere along the line, somebody thought that being last meant that you're doomed. It does not mean you're doomed. It simply means you're last. I hope that people will understand that. When this study is completed, and it's not completed yet, they'll bring us a recommendation. At this point, they haven't. We don't know what the recommendation will be. The recommendation could be, keep doing what you're doing because you're doing it well. And that's what we really are hoping for. I'm sure that's what you're hoping for, too. I ask you to be patient. It's very hard to be last. Please hang in there.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. And I think I'm speaking for all the board members when we say we truly and sincerely want to thank you for coming out tonight and sharing your concerns with us. And please know that we're listening to you, and we consider what you're saying very important, and we take it very seriously. So thank you. Okay? And with that, we'll move on to item two, Committee of the Hall.
Should I clarify that there are not any items on the agenda related to this tonight?
Yes.
Oh, I guess we don't need to.
Yeah. I think they've looked at the agenda.
Okay.
So Committee of the Hall, and Superintendent Oquus, you're going to be-
I am. Thank you.
Speaking to that?
Thank you. We have on our agenda approval for current and incoming board members to take M A S B classes during the November M A S B conference. And so you should have received in your weekly packet on this past Thursday a registration form and as well as a donation of the classes being offered. As you know, we passed a policy last year in accordance with state requirements that these classes be approved prior to registration for the classes by the district on behalf of the board. And so I believe many of you have already turned in your desired class list to Mrs. Wozniak. If you have not, if you would be willing to do so by Thursday, we'll be sure to include that, possibly by Wednesday, so we can prepare the motion. And so it will identify the board member attending, the total cost, and if you have the, if you know what the classes are, that's fine. If you want to just simply say three classes or two classes, that's acceptable as well for this particular motion that will go forward on Monday evening. Additionally, as we discussed at the study session, we have board elections in November. We have four board seats open, and we have two, unfortunately, we have two of our, our current board members who will not be returning next year. So we know that there will be two new faces to the board, at least, right? So we have contacted M A S B, and they do have a provision by which we can pass a motion to allocate funds for new board members, because this comes right on the heels of that. We have the election, I believe, November 8th, I think it is, and these, this starts November 10th through the 13th. And so what we would do is jump from the frying pan into the fire, if those folks so desire, and begin taking classes. So the suggestion was made at our study session that we go ahead and earmark those funds. We do have those funds that are allocated for this purpose and the professional growth and continued learning of our board members, which, as you know, we value quite highly and are part of the board's code of ethics as well. So if you'll share that information with us on the number of classes you plan to take, we will certainly have that prepared in a motion for you on, in your packet to go forward at next Monday's board meeting.
Thank you. And Mrs. Bonnefield, will you note in the minutes that this will go to our regular meeting of August 15th for a vote? Thank you. We'll move to item-
President?
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
I wanted to point out that the, I don't know if anybody got one of these, the new schedule, because the one that is in our packet is inconsistent with the handbook.
Mrs. Jarvis was pointing that out earlier.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody understood.
So we need to go with that, yeah.
You have to go off of the new, the new sheet. That is consistent with the, the handbook.
Okay.
Thanks for mentioning that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Okay, Finance Committee, item number three, and Mrs. Jarvis is the chair. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, Vice President Laura. We have several items to cover tonight under the Finance Committee, and we will call Ms. Abbey to the microphone to help us discuss the bid results for the pizza lunch.
Thank you very much. As we do every time this year, we bring you our upcoming food service items for, that we've had to bid out. We have two on the agenda this evening. The first one is for pizza, and this is for pizzas that we have delivered at the schools. And so we have had, for several years in a row, we've had a vendor, we've only had one vendor that met- one vendor that met the nutritional requirements. This year, we had two vendors respond to our bid. And while we have been very happy with the first vendor, both with their food, with their food product and with their services, the second vendor came in lower, a buck, a buck of pizza less, so that's pretty significant for us. It's about a $20,000 savings. So we are recommending we go with the lower vendor, which is Pizza Hut, give them an opportunity to service the district this year, and we'll evaluate that as we go. We could always change that if we need to, but I'm sure they'll do a great job. They, as you know, we have testers every year, and they tested both pizzas, and we're happy with both. So we would recommend that we go with the lower bid, which will be Pizza Hut, and give them a shot this year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Did, did Pizza Hut this year, did they like go through the process to make sure that they meet the qualifications? And I mean, I'm assuming since they're a national chain, that this is a new thing, and they're like, hey, we do this now?
Right. Right, exactly.
All right.
So hopefully, we'll have more competition in the future.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I personally would like to say that I really appreciate the fact that some people like Little Caesars and some people like Pizza, Pizza Hut, but that you went with the lower cost, that's a lot of dough.
Okay. We won't hold that against Jarvis.
You're getting a clap there, Mrs. Jarvis.
I'm all about saving money.
We could put this on consent, or regular consent would probably be fine.
Well, since it's new, though, it's a new vendor.
Regular, please. A dollar amount, please.
Thank you, on the regular agenda. And then we'll move on to the recommendation for the dairy bid.
Again, as we do every year, or every couple of years at least, we do go out for bid on various items that we'll be using in the food service program this year. Specifically, this bid is for dairy-related items, including milk, cheeses, cottage cheese, sour cream, and juice as well. You do have a detailed bid tabulation attached. We are recommending that we go with the low bid, which is Smith Foods, Inc., Orville, Ohio. It's actually the same company that we've had in the past. They changed their name and their city, but they were in Ohio before. But they are the lowest bid, and we've been happy with their service. They're, they're actually only, the only company also that provides storage for milk, so we ask that the company who, who actually brings us our milk also provides us the equipment to store it in, to keep it cold. So they're the only one, not only are they low bid by about 50 grand, but they're also the only one providing the equipment we need. So we're very happy they're back on board again, and we would recommend we go forward with Smith.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll move, any questions or comments?
Just a question.
Mr. Johnson?
Just so I understand, what are some of these abbreviations for, do you know?
Give it a try.
They've got this H P T. Do you know what that is?
Okay, I'll find out for you. I know it's chocolate, let's see, white milk, chocolate milk, strawberry milk. I'm not sure if I know what the H P T part of it. I mean, those are all milk products, but half pint? Pint? Half pint?
Maybe half pint.
That's probably just half pint.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I think, I feel Mrs. Jarvis' joke coming out.
Right, because then when you look at the next ones, it says pint.
Right. And those are the plastic ones as opposed to the cartons.
Oh.
Okay. Okay.
Do we want this on consent?
Regular.
Again, it's a dollar amount, okay. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay, then we can move on to the 26, 2016, 2017 tuition rate.
Thank you. Each year, we calculate what we call the tuition rate, and it's based on per capita expenditures, actually, from the last time we reported our financial information to the state of Michigan. So that would be for the 1415 school year. And the reason we do this, although this is not a number that we use very often, it, we do have this number available during the year, should we have an opportunity where we need to charge a student tuition. So let me explain, because it's a very rare circumstance. Generally, what happens, as you know, we're not a tuition-based school district. We get our money from the state of Michigan based on students who live or choose Livonia public schools. However, occasionally, we have a student who maybe moves out in their senior year, moves to another school district, and by our board policy, we allow them to finish the school year, and then we may charge them. The difference between what we would get from their new school district and what we calculate here on this tuition rate. So I don't think we had anyone last year, 1516, that may have had someone in 1415. It pops up occasionally, but we do use this rate, a formula that the state of Michigan provides, M D E provides us to use, again, based on our expenditures from the previous year. It changes slightly from year to year. Last year, it was $9,899. We calculated $9,932. So if we should have that circumstance come up this year, whether it's for two months or, or four months, or whatever it is, we would calculate that prorata amount for those parents who would choose to make that decision. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments?
Regular consent?
Let's put this on the regular agenda. All right, the discussion of cash flow borrowing. Ms. Abbey, you're on a roll.
I am. Thank you very much. As we have for the last several years, we come to the Board of Education to ask that you approve a resolution to allow us to borrow for cash flow purposes. And as we have talked about in the past couple of items, the school districts across the state of Michigan get paid primarily in two ways. One, from the Michigan Department of Education through monthly payments based on our per pupil foundation allowance times the number of students that we have. So for example, on a $140 million budget, that's probably $100 to $110 million of the funds that we receive. That payment cycle starts in October of each year. You remember, our fiscal year starts July, our school starts in September, and our first payment comes in October. We have payroll starting in July that runs all the way through the following June. So we, we run a 12-month district. We get our first payment in October, and then we get our last payment, or 11 payments, in August. We don't get a payment in September at all. If, the state fiscal year starts in October. So you see, they have allocated how they pay us based on their fiscal year, not based on our fiscal year. The second way we get paid is primarily through local property taxes that we collect. It's, again, as part of that total pie that we get. That's maybe another 20 million of that 140 million, and we collect that twice a year, in the summer and in the winter. So we have very sporadic ways in which we receive our cash throughout the year. It's not a weekly or monthly sort of, of cycle that fits into the way in which we have expenditures. The second, so we have erratic, somewhat erratic resources coming in, and then we also, of course, as I said, we have payroll that runs 52 weeks or every 26 weeks. And what happens with the way our cash comes in, which is the 20th of the month from the state, is we frequently might have a payroll on that Friday before we get paid. If, if the payday happens to be Saturday, we won't get that money until Monday. So the district will on occasion run into periods throughout the year where we may dip and have a negative cash flow. So what we have done each year is to make sure that we have enough resources to meet all of our payroll and accounts payable throughout the year. And to do that, we have borrowed upfront in the beginning of the year, and then we pay that back through our resources. So it's not something that we pay over three years or four years or anything. It's always something that we pay off within 12 months. We have in the past done cash flow borrowing a couple of different ways, and I outlined in the memo to, in the board packet this week, we could borrow with the state, which we've done in the past. That puts us in a larger pool, and sometimes the interest rates are better than if we did it on our own. However, with those loans, we really have to keep them out a full 12 months, which, you know, obviously is higher interest. We have also looked at a line of credit with the bank, and also looked at a state aid note directly with the bank. So just like you could go and get a personal loan from a bank, we could get a state aid note with the bank. I provided you that detail in your packet. We looked at both of those options, and we really found that if we did a state aid note directly with a bank, it was the least expensive way. So we had two quotes from the bank for a line of credit, two quotes from a bank for a short-term state aid note, and found that if we go within a three- to four-month period on a state aid note, that's really the least expensive way for us to borrow. And based on our cash flow projections, we could do that. So we have, our cash flow dip is just twice throughout the year, and we feel that we could cover that by a shorter note. So as I indicated in my note to you, we're looking at about $3.5 million in borrowing for next year, or for this year. That's down from about $6.5 million from 1516, and our costs will be a little over $15,000, which will be down from about $66,000 for last year. So we would recommend that we go forward with the state aid note directly from the bank. I'll pass out this evening, before you get home, go home, the draft resolution that we would ask you to approve next Monday night, so you'd have an opportunity to look at that. Again, very straightforward, using Truand Law Firm as we have for many years to help us put that resolution together. It basically says that you're authorizing up to $3.5 million for a state aid note with a bank. So with that, a lot of detail, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. So the, the state aid note, Lisa, is one that we would be able to draw on as needed?
No, we'd not, we didn't want to do the line of credit, so there were two options.
So it's different than that?
Yeah, the state aid note will give us the $3.5 million upfront, and then, of course, we'll just invest that and have that available. The line of credit, we thought, might be a little bit cheaper. There, there's not huge dollars in prices, if you look at that. But what is different, it was with the line of credit, both times that we actually want to draw on it, we would have to come back to the Board of Education, have a new resolution, have you approve it. Let's say one time, it was a million and a half, and the second time, it was $2 million. We would have to come to the board, and we'd have to have a new resolution, and then we'd have to incur more legal costs, because we'd not just do this the one time, but we'd have to do it at least two more times. So we did find, there wasn't a significant difference, but I think from an efficiency standpoint, just getting the line of credit, or excuse me, getting the state aid note for a short period, three to four months, will be more efficient for the board and for the business office.
And this is a lot lower than we were last year?
Yes.
And the fees are significantly lower.
Significantly lower, right.
All right, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Ms. Abbey, can you explain, because I guess I don't understand the process, but with the repayment process, how does that work? Does it come out of just a wire transfer, or is it actual check at one point, or will we get the funds, or how does it take place?
So when we have, when we went through the state of Michigan, when we were part of the state of Michigan pool, it literally came out of our state aid in August.
Okay.
So they put it in our state aid, and they take it out of our state aid, you know, depending on what we were doing that year. Last year, when we had the bank loan or state aid note, I believe it was a wire transfer directly back to the bank. All right, thank you.
Other questions, comments? I appreciate you finding a way to help us save lots of money. That's a significant savings in the fees. It's wonderful to see things going our way financially, and I appreciate the responsible action.
Yeah, I have to thank our finance director, Mr. Meligas, who, who likes to find these. So I appreciate him doing that. That's a lot of legwork to get all that done. So I do appreciate him doing that.
And we can put that on the agenda?
Regular agenda?
Yes, please. Resolution. And finally, we will call Mr. Archibald.
I will, I will jump in for Mr. Archibald this evening.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And this is a recommendation to Mr. Archibald's pianos.
I don't want to, something about hair.
I'm not going there?
I could just start passing these, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. While those are going around, I'll just do a little reminder of where we've been. Just a reminder that we are looking at the purchase of musical instruments through our 2013 approved bond. As you know, we have gone out for different musical instruments so far, including band and orchestra and marching band. And we are pleased to make a recommendation this evening as it relates to pianos. As you know, we've gone out to bid back in April for pianos. We've had an opportunity here at committee meetings, study sessions, to have several conversations about our recommendation for pianos. This evening, we are bringing you just two types of pianos for recommendation for approval by the Board of Education. There are six pianos total. There are three pianos, we're calling them baby grand. I'm not sure that's a technical term. I'm an accountant. Not my expertise as to names, but we're calling them the baby grands or the smaller grands that will be used in the, in the district in the three high schools. And then we also have a recommendation on the grand pianos that will be in our performing arts centers in the three high schools. And what I have brought to you tonight, which you've seen in the past as well, are the bid tabulations. So if I could briefly go through those with you, we had for each of those three vendors that responded to our bid, to our R F P. And as we discussed in the past, there are, there is one vendor that met all of our specifications. That is the Steinway Piano Gallery. We are recommending that we move forward with the Steinway Piano Gallery for each of these grand piano purchases, or for the two grand piano purchases. For the baby grand, that would be a total cost of $26,000, per unit, excuse me, $8.6938, for a total cost of $80,618. For the grand piano, each piano is $87,026, for a total of $261,078. And as we discussed in the past, we do feel like these are the best pianos for our high school programs. As you know, we had a committee of teachers that worked to make this recommendation. We do feel strongly that these are the best instruments for this program. And with that, because you've heard most of this in the past and have had this information before, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments about the grand and baby grand pianos? Mr. Simmons?
We discussed this again at the study session last week, and at that time, we were able, myself and others, were able to give our thanks to the committee who put a lot of time in, a lot of effort, and then put a lot of time and an effort reviewing their recommendation once again for us. So this was, is obviously a lot of money, and people put a lot of thought into it, and I just want to thank our teachers and administrators. It was, it is, was given thorough due diligence, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. On the, the spec sheets, Ms. Abbey?
Yes.
For the, the baby grand, it says three, but on the grand, it says quantity 27. What is, can you tell me what that is?
On the very top, it says grand pianos three, dash spec sheet, and then, oh, you're right, it does over there. That's just incorrect. It's three. Trust me, we're only buying three of them.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that...
You're correct.
That this isn't the first three of 27.
No.
No.
No, it is not. We are only buying three grand pianos for the performing arts centers.
I think Mr. Archibald tells us that.
And the three baby grands will be utilized in the vocal music classrooms at each of our high schools as well.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. I know I had some conversation with Ms. Oquus in reference to this piano bid in the process. I still, even though we've had much discussion, I'm still not settled with my own thought process, or not thought process, but settled on how the process for the actual bid itself took place. So I'm struggling. I'm letting everyone know I'm struggling. If the committee's recommendation was for the Steinway, I don't have any concerns about that. I just have more concerns with the process. So just letting everyone know. And I know Ms. Oquus told me that she's had discussions otherwise, but I'm struggling. So just letting, letting everyone know before Monday, or next Monday.
Other questions or comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you clarify what you're struggling with?
Oh, sure. Well, you know why? And I will clarify. It's... It's, in the bid itself, or even if you look at the bid tabulation, it was specified or equivalent. And I know when we have had discussions before, there's no equivalent to a Boston Steinway piano, none. So, I guess that's the part that I'm having difficulty with. It's the bid process. If you wanted to go and do a sole source item, that's fine, but it wasn't presented that way, and that's the part of this process that I'm struggling with. So, that's my thought.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
I think the, Mrs. Abby hit it on the head for me at one of our last meetings, is she talked about, you know, if we order iPads, we're going to order iPads. Someone who sells PCs isn't going to be able to bid on that.
Right, no, I understand that.
But that doesn't mean we're single source bidding. We had 35 different companies, correct, were, at least 35 companies were contacted at a minimum, of which several of those were Steinway dealers, correct?
I don't know how many were Steinway dealers.
But the other Steinway dealers had the ability to-
Absolutely.
-to bid on them.
Yeah, I mean, we push out a bid through the Buy From Michigan website, as well as putting it on our website, as well as, most vendors, you know, check that from time to time. But that's why the Bid For Michigan exists, because it pushes out to vendors who-
Have indicated.
-indicated that they're interested in bids, either from a public school, or specific to music, or, you know, to any and everything. You know, vendors have their opportunity to plug in the codes that they're interested in.
Yeah, so, I think, you know, it would be like, if we asked for iPads, and somebody quotes us a Chromebook, the Chromebook is a very similar item, but it doesn't meet the specifications we're looking for.
Yeah, and just our due diligence, as it relates to how we do bids, is that our understanding, which I understand what you're saying, Mrs. McDonald, is that the, or equivalent, while there may not be an equivalent Steinway that you and I know about, that doesn't mean there isn't one out there that exists. Now, I think probably we've all assumed there isn't one, but the point is, if a vendor presented an instrument, and we went out and tested it and thought it was equivalent, we could buy that instrument. Nothing would have prevented us from buying an instrument that we thought was as good as. So, while, that's why the or equivalent exists, is to give vendors an opportunity to present what their equipment is, whether, you know, it's a tractor, or whether it's an iPad, or whether it's a musical instrument, and so that they have it, because there might be, at some point, a computer dealer who puts something out that's better than the iPad, but nobody knew that that particular piece of equipment existed. So, that's part of the reason, is to provide some opportunity and competition for someone who does feel that they have an equivalent machinery.
Thank you for that point. Other thoughts? Well, I'm with you, Mrs. McDonald. I'm struggling as well, and I have great respect for the committee and the work they did. When they reported, they did say that some of them liked the Steinway, some of them liked the Yamaha, some of them liked the Kawai. There was, the committee was fairly well split. And I think it's kind of similar to the pizza bid. Some people like Little Caesar's, and some people like Pizza Hut. Some people like Steinway, and some people like Yamaha. And with the pizza bid, we went with the one that saved the most dough, and I think that this is a similar situation. We do need to be financially responsible. So, I'm struggling as well. Mrs. Bonnefield?
I'm going to disagree with it being very similar. Our pizza contract is for one year, and if we don't like it in the middle of the year, we can always opt for a different vendor. These pianos, we're going to have for 50 years.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, for 50 years. So, I think there's a big difference between a contract that's a one-year contract for pizza, something that we can change in the middle of the year, as opposed to a purchase for something that needs to last for 50 years. I agree, if we go out and buy toilet paper, let's go with the lowest vendor. If somebody gets a splinter, we'll go with a different toilet paper the next time. But those are easy switches, they're not huge investments. We don't expect to buy enough toilet paper to last for 50 years.
That's true, and this is a huge purchase and deserves consideration. I think that a well-maintained piano should be expected, and I don't think the name on the box is what makes the difference. And I had another thought. And it's gone. I think that when you get to a certain point, particularly if you're looking at commercial instruments, they all meet guidelines that help them to last 50 years. They're designed to do that. They're designed to put up with years and years of many different players, lots of use, being moved around, and at some point, it comes down to personal preference. Personal preference should not cost us between $63,000 and $129,000. That's a lot of money, just for a personal preference. Today, there was a fundraiser, a dine-out fundraiser at Buffalo Wild Wings, to raise money for the color guard at Churchill, so that they could buy new flags. They had one last week for Stevenson's color guard to buy new flags. There's going to be a car wash on the 20th for the marching band at Stevenson, who needs equipment and uniforms. I'd love to see some of that money going towards some of those items that could probably come under the auspices of the bond dollars. I don't know for sure, but I'm thinking that I would rather see the money go towards things that we need, as opposed to buying a name. Mr. Centers?
So, I do think, I do take umbrage with one point, in that while people did have differences of opinion, the recommendation that came to us was not Yamaha, or Steinway, or another, all rated equally. There was a recommendation that the committee came to. So, and I also think that, you know, this is, we have invested in the arts by, with our performing arts centers. We have made a commitment, and to go out and bid for equipment, and have people spend so much time on it, I think it's important for us to listen to what has been recommended. And if we went with Yamaha, I would be right behind Yamaha, but I'm not an expert. And I consider that the people in the classrooms and on the committees, the experts. So, I can't debate with you the quality versus, one versus the other. But I do believe in our processes and what we do here to come to a conclusion. So, ultimately, that is what I'm relying on.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
And also, part of this, for me, quite frankly, is that our staff is going to have to interact with the vendor for many years. Is that correct? They would be the same one that we go to for repairs, and maintain the pianos, and things like that?
I would think so. I mean, we've used different firms throughout the year, but those are all, you know, long past warranty type of-
Okay, so, well, I guess that's a point. If it's during the warranty period, then they're going to have to come out. And quite frankly, one of the other bidders, I would not expect the staff to be put in a position, to be treated poorly. It bothers me to think that I would make a vote to put our staff in a position where they're going to have to deal with someone that is condescending and just rude. And I think that's a big part of my, in the decision-making process, too.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Quite honestly, I don't know the difference between an oboe and a piano. I have a baby grand piano in my living room, and my wife, when she said, "We're getting a young Chang," I thought she meant we were going to adopt. I had no clue. We've got very experienced, bright people on this committee that have spent oodles and oodles of hours investing in looking at various pianos. And, like I said, I wouldn't know one piano from the other. But when we have the experienced people that we have on this committee that have spent, now, pushing a year, evaluating what they want, going out, listening to pianos, I think we would be doing a disservice to them, and I think it would be a slap in their face, to say, after all that time, we don't think what you've chosen and you think is the best product for our students for the next 50 years, that we have the gall to stand up and say, "Well, we think you're wrong." Because we don't know. They're the ones that we have to rely on. And I'm confident that they've done the best job, that they've looked at the best pianos that they can, and this is what they believe is in the best interest of this school district going forward.
Other questions or comments? We can put it on the agenda?
I'm assuming that'll be the regular agenda thing?
And Vice President Laura, that's all for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis, and we'll move on to Item 4, Building and Site, and Mr. Johnson is the chair of that committee.
Thank you, Vice President Laura. We had two items, but I've been informed that we are going to remove the recommendation to purchase replacement tractors. I was ready for that.
You have to wait with anticipation for a future meeting.
So, we will just have one item, and that is Item 4B, Bid Results for Lighting Replacement at High School Field Houses, and Ms. Abby will help us with that.
I will, and I think this will be the last item you have to hear from me this evening. We did have an opportunity to have some discussion at our study session, and Harry Lau, our Administrator of Operations, was there to answer all of your very deep questions that we had, but we are bringing forward recommendation to replace the lighting in the field houses, or the gyms, at the three high schools. And this has been a part of our long-term project of replacing gym lighting across the district, and we're doing that for two reasons. Number one, efficiency and savings in cost, which is very important. As you know, these replacements are done with our sinking fund dollars, and then the actual efficiencies or rebates that we get, which we get both usually, we actually recognize in our general fund, so that's very good. In addition to being good stewards of our resources, not only our financial resources, but just the fact that with these old halide lights, what happens is, because these are the old ones that take a long time to come on, and a long time to come down when you turn them off, is that our people come in in the morning and turn them on, and they stay on all day. So, whereas in an elementary, that might not be as long, but as you know, in our high schools, where they're very early in the morning till very late in the evening. So, it's just very, very inefficient, these old lights. And again, it has been part of our overall sinking fund plan to replace those lights on a consistent basis. You've heard us bring them forward in our elementaries and middle schools, and five, sixes in the past. So, this is a part of that overall plan. We did go out for bid. You have the bid tabulation with you this evening. We are recommending the lowest bidder. I did just want to mention, again, that this is, there are 144 lights in each of those gymnasiums, and so, they'll be replaced with the LED lights, they'll have sensors, so not only will there, there'll be three different sensor stations, so someone's only using part of the gym, lights will only be on in part of the gym, so it'd be much, much more efficient. There'll be significant savings. Mr. Lau mentioned that those LED lights last about 50,000 hours. So, in addition to them being more efficient just in general, it's also a lot more efficient for our maintenance department, because they're not in there trying to replace those lights as often either. So, that really saves a significant amount of time for them. We anticipate about a five-to-eight-year payback period. I think it's probably closer to five, but I'll be conservative and say five to eight. And we are looking at whether there will be some rebates. They're starting to slow down a little bit, but Dave Crispin is very aggressive, and if there's anything out there to get, I promise you, he will get those rebates. So, he pushes us on a lot of these projects, so I'm very happy to have him help us with these as well. So, again, we did have several vendors respond to the bid. Shoreview Electric Company was the low bid at $396,000 for all three schools. As I mentioned, at the study session, we had asked for an alternate on this bid. Once we get into the project, if the state requires us to make some changes with how we run the electricity for emergency lights, there might be an additional cost. Shoreview's would be $17,000, bringing that to $413,000, but we won't know that until they get into the project. So, just, you have those numbers in front of you in case that happens. We let you know, but we would certainly move forward and meet the requirements of the electrician inspector from MDE. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I missed something.
That's okay. Just a quick note, and I know we discussed this at the study session, and it is in your memo from Mr. Lau and from Ms. Abby, but this would be a sinking fund purchase, and the payback on this, over that five-to-six, or five-to-eight-year period, would return to the general fund. So, just a reminder about that, and where we would utilize those dollars.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. Any questions or comments? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you. The voluntary alternate, is that a set figure based on the emergency fund lighting?
Yeah, that's what that is. That alternate that ranges by the different vendors, and is $17,000 for Shoreview.
Okay.
Yeah.
And a second question, and I don't know how much of a concern this would be, but when you mentioned that there would be three zones for the sensors, would it still be light enough? Because I don't know. In the gym for safety-
They could just turn them all on. I mean, there's no reason you can't turn them on. It's just that if no one's using that zone, you know, they turn off, so. Yeah, they will meet all those requirements.
Okay, so it'll be safe enough for the kids?
Absolutely.
So, one section of the gym's dark, they're not going to have to worry about?
No.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
We even do that in some of our smaller classrooms, so.
Mrs. Bonnefield, did you have a question?
No, I was, I wanted to make sure that you saw, Mrs. McDonald.
Yes, all right. Mrs. Jarvis?
When would these be implemented?
We'll start as soon as you approve. We'll start to move forward.
Do you think they could be installed before school starts?
I don't know if they'll be installed, but we'll start. It's a project that they can work on, and not ours.
My recollection was, they said it would take a number of weeks.
Yeah, they'll have to order them.
Depends on how long it takes to come in.
Yeah, but it's not like we have to wait till the spring, or anything.
Any other questions?
Yes, we're going to put that on the regular, already devolved agenda.
Yes, regular, please.
And with that, Vice President Laura, Building and Site is concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Item number five, Personnel Committee, and Mr. Centers is the chair. Mr. Centers?
Thank you, Vice President Laura. We have two items this evening. Discussion on an update of the 2016 MASB Superintendent Evaluation Model. Mrs. Oquist is going to speak to that. Mrs. Oquist?
Thank you, Mr. Centers. So, just another, I know we've discussed this a couple of times, but just in anticipation of bringing this to a formal vote next week, as you know, the teacher evaluation and administrator evaluation law that was passed by our state legislature requires that we utilize models recommended by the legislature and by these guidelines for our teacher evaluations, our administrator evaluations, which would include district and school-level administrators, as well as the superintendent's evaluation. I shared with you the update from MASBN this last week, but just a couple of quick notes. Just a reminder that it is a requirement that all of our instructional staff, teachers, administrators, and the superintendent be evaluated annually. As part of that, a student growth and assessment portion for this year will continue to be at the rate of 25% of the evaluation. That does increase in 2018, 19 to 40% of the annual evaluation. That does increase in 2018, 19 to 40% of the annual evaluation. Additionally, as you know, we have been working to post the models that we will be utilizing for each of those groups on our website, as is required by law. And so the MASB model has been approved for use, and we have been provided with all of the assurances and the criteria for posting on our website. So if it is not up already, it will be very shortly upon your approval of this model. As you know, this is the model that we utilized last year, and I believe you utilized the year prior to as well. There are some tweaks to the model for this coming year. There is an opportunity for both the Board and the superintendent to provide some written feedback for each of the standards. There is still sub-standards for each of those standards that are identified, and then evidence that is required for, for each of those as provided by the superintendent to the Board. I think it was a very valuable model. It's a very detailed rubric. It allows us to look deeply at each of the sections that are laid out as part of the evaluation model, and it also allows us to drill down to specific areas where we want to continue my professional development and growth on behalf of the district toward, toward our success and meeting our goals. In addition to that, I will be bringing to you at our next study session the recommended goals for this coming year. So the SMART goals are also an additional part of this evaluation model. So in addition to the rubric, we will continue to have annual goals that we work on on behalf of the entire district. And then finally, the last piece that is required beginning this year is that anyone who is completing an evaluation, so a principal of a teacher, a cabinet member of an administrator, or myself of a cabinet member, and then the Board of me, are required to go through training for that. So as recently as today, I had a conversation with someone at RESA, Lenris Mirsky, who you know is going to be working with us on our Board Workshop, and we were discussing that he had mentioned about 95% of the districts are utilizing the MASB Superintendent Evaluation Model. And we had talked about whether or not it may be feasible to have some training centrally designed at either at RESA or at a couple of the local districts, rather than each district bringing in folks to complete that training. So that's something I'll continue to explore if the Board would be interested in me doing that. I'm not sure if they would be able to coordinate that, but as you know, the ISDs did receive some funding that was, that was intended to assist districts with doing this training for the new evaluation models. So I'll keep you abreast of that. It just would have to be done sometime prior to June. So we have some time on this. I'll continue to work with our Personnel Chair, Trustee Centers, on that and keep you updated and let you know if there's something that they can design that we can attend. That way, there may be more than one, so if someone can't attend one evening, they could attend another. But in any case, we'll be utilizing that tool, and we will be bringing it forward to, although it is not a requirement, it is one of the main responsibilities of the Board of Education, as we've identified. And so we will be bringing forward the recommendation for use of this model formally at our Board Meeting for a vote next week.
Can I suggest that we possibly look into having the training if we do multiple districts in our new auditorium at Franklin? And then the Patriot Inn could also provide, you know, a meal. Obviously, we, it might be a charge thing, but we have the availability with the Patriot Inn, the kids over there that cook, and the auditorium with all the brand-new, you know, equipment and acoustics, and obviously, we would be able to house as many people as could show up for that.
I would be very happy to offer that.
Thanks. I think that would be great.
Great suggestion.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
We're putting this on the regular agenda, right?
Yes, please. Thank you.
The next item is Item B, Discussion on Five Dimensions Teacher Evaluation Model. Mr. Francis will be joining us.
So I wanted to give you a brief update again on the, the new teacher evaluation system that we're going to be using for classroom teachers starting this fall. And part of that, as, as Mrs. Oakquist had mentioned, is that there's training involved for anyone who's going to evaluate, and I'll touch on that, too. So the Five Dimensions of Teaching and Learning are one of the four approved models that the State of Michigan had put out on their website to, for districts to adopt. And under the new state law, as you know, we have to have an unmodified version or one that passes the reliability and validity test. So the Five Dimensions of Teaching and Learning does pass that test, obviously being an approved model, and we don't intend to be modifying it. And they've also already provided us with the information for our website so that we can post on there to comply with, with the legislation. Quickly, the background, it actually comes from a group called the Center for Educational Leadership out of the University of Washington's School of Education. Their original goal, or continues to be their goal, of the Center for Educational Leadership is to close the achievement gap in schools across the country. And from that was born the Five Dimensions of Teaching and Learning. That became a tool, and a few of our neighboring communities and school districts have also adopted it, and we're, are going to be using it this coming fall along with LaVonia Public Schools. The Five Dimensions that are mentioned are purpose, student engagement, curriculum and pedagogy, assessment for student learning, classroom environment and culture, and then the plus, because we're actually doing the 5D plus. The plus stands for the professional collaboration and communication. The current schedule for training for all of our evaluators, and several cabinet members are participating in the full training as well, so that we can make sure that we see, you know, what the background knowledge of it is, et cetera. There's six full days of training provided through the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals. That's the organization in Michigan that trains for the 5D around the state. There's six full days. We've already accomplished and completed two of those dates back in June. We have two more coming up really quite soon, and a little bit later in August. And then there'll be two more dates very early in the fall. Because school will then be in session, we're going to split up the administrative teams into two different cohorts, so that half the administrators can get the training, and then a different day, the other half. And it's actually been very well organized in that, running it through Wayne County RESA with the training, they have cohorts throughout the state. And, and anybody who maybe had a conflict with one of these dates, or someone who's a new administrator, they can just go ahead and show up at one of these others in various counties around, around the state. And that's been very helpful for us. So really, I mean, that was the quickest piece on our training. We do have a gentleman coming from MASSP to do an overview, similar to what our day one in, in our training was, an overview of the Five Dimensions for the teachers. We're going to be doing that later this month. So we want to make sure that they have that, that sort of bird's eye view and a little bit of drill down into what are the Five Dimensions, because this will be new for them as well, and then some follow-up at the building level. And in essence, the, the entire program or the entire evaluation, really, the basis would be to, to get a focus area so that administrators can work with teachers to give them feedback on what they're seeing in the classroom. It's really a model, something that we, we wanted to find in basing our decision for something new, was something that was really a growth model, something that was all about coaching and growth for, for our teachers and helping them progress from point A to point B in their professional career with us. That's really the, the essence of it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to help answer any of them.
Questions, comments? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Phil, has there been any thought given to, once all of the training is completed, for like a debriefing session for all the administrators that took the training to sit down and discuss what they had learned in terms of taking that and implementing it?
Yeah, the, actually, the training itself was set up somewhat to do that. They, at the end of, we did two days back-to-back, which was pretty intense. But at the end of those first two days, which they grouped together because they knew that we were going to be doing them back-to-back, at the end of it, the presenter put up some chart paper and, and gave an opportunity for everyone to go up, and he had a couple of boxes and a couple of questions, and anything that you see as very positive with this. What are the items that you've already seen that you want to latch on to? You can put that up. And what do you see are going to be the challenges of this for you? And you can put that up. And I got to keep that, that item, those, those chart papers. And our evaluation committee's coming together very soon, in the next two weeks, to debrief some of these pieces. And then as we go through the next two, we will start to, we will continue to be debriefed as a committee, as well as taking the feedback from the administrators who had given it to us, not only after the two days, but after the next two days as well, then leading into the fall. So I really do want to hear what their challenges, what they think the challenges are going to be, so we can help support and maintain just sort of the, the flow that we've got going right now. Because there's, there's a lot of excitement. There's, there's a lot of apprehension, I think, from, from some of the administrators, just because it's new, and I think that's going to be true with, with anything you do. And I'm sure the teachers will have apprehension, because it's going to be something that they're unfamiliar with. But there was also quite a bit of excitement generated in that I heard from many, many administrators, boy, this is exactly what you want to see going on, you know, with teaching and learning and coaching.
You, you also indicated, I think, that a lot of the other districts are using the Five Dimensions?
I wouldn't, I didn't want to say a lot of, just, we have a couple neighboring districts that are using it. It's, but it's definitely grown in this past couple of years, and especially this year, the use throughout the state of Michigan has grown. It's used quite a bit in other states. If you think about coming from the state of Washington, it, it's used quite a bit out there. But around here, it is definitely growing. I know there are several Wayne County districts that are going to it, hence Wayne RESA needing to create a couple of different cohorts to accommodate the Wayne County districts that are actually being trained in this.
Are there any districts that have been using it, say, for the last year?
I, I know of one for sure that's local. I was actually speaking to a teacher who, who came from a district that they've used it the past two years, and we had a little conversation about it. So that's not a real long time, but we, I do know of, of a local district that, Oakland County.
That's what I was going to say. I mean, have you talked to the, any of the administrators that have had an opportunity to use it and get their feedback on, on how well it's working and how well they like it?
What my current plan is, is sort of trying to put my head together with Northville and Westland, who are the two districts that are neighbors to us that are going through it. So I've met already with their HR folks and debriefed on how their first trainings went, what's coming up, what, what sort of came up from those, and then what's coming up next. And we plan to get together again. We met in earlier this month, or it might have been the very end of July. The days are running together already. And then we've already put another date on the calendar for after, at the end of this month, for after our next two, to try and discuss, what do you see, how, you know, how do you guys plan to roll it out with, with teachers and through the school year? And I'd like to continue to debrief with them throughout the year. And that's, that's actually, the very first time we got together was recently, and it was helpful, just sort of hearing the different ideas, a larger district and a, and a smaller district, and we're, you know, a larger district, but hearing the ideas of both was very helpful.
Okay, great. Thanks. Mrs. McCall?
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Mr. Francis, I'm assuming that the teachers are given the evaluation upfront, so they understand what their expectations are?
Yes, yes. That would be a big piece of that, that first day, the August training. There's, you know, the, the Five Dimensions, what they are, there's a rubric, there's some background knowledge in how it's utilized, the focus areas, and what that means and what that's going to mean to them. There's a software called Pivot that we're going to be using. Some of that will be, most, most of the user end will be the administrator, but there'll also be a back and forth with the teacher for feedback and answering questions. So all of that will be, will be brought up. Because we did ask, what does that day look like? And that was the explanation.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Bonfield?
So I, I love this evaluation plan. I think it's great, and I see a lot of benefits to the staff and to the students in the long run. My question is, what kind of either, I want to say continuing education, and that's not PE days?
Yeah.
And so I, I think this is great. There's high excitement, but I don't want to see, because it seems like such a powerful tool, I don't want this to turn into, yep, we evaluated, you know? And how is that going to continue? How are we going to continue to keep the excitement and actually go back and utilize these data and have it as a positive application for our teachers and also then that, you know, trickles down into our student population?
Some of the, the ideas that the Evaluation Committee, some of the goals, I should say, that we have are to find and bring in some professional development for the evaluators, as well as the teachers. Some of the idea that I know, one that, that we've discussed is like a rate of reliability type of program, where we can have some in service on that, because if one administrator, evaluator goes into a classroom and evaluates a teacher, another should come up with very similar. I mean, nothing's absolutely exact and scientific and precise in the sense that, you know, to the, the nitty-gritty, it would be exactly the same. But you want to make sure you have a range where they are similar. So that was one of the topics that was brought up, and that administrators had said, we, we want to go through something like that, because that's important. We want to make sure that, you know, teachers can be split between buildings. They can be in a building this year and potentially in a different building the next year. We want to make sure that, that we have, that we're doing this the same way. And that's something that RESA has, has brought up as well, as far as types of training. We also want to look quite a bit at that, the student growth portion of the evaluation, which is, is still there, and that's going to be, you know, 25% this year. We want to have more training for both teachers and administrators on what is the student growth measures, what, what's out there, all of us reviewing what we're currently doing. And again, Wayne RESA has been very big on, on that track and in helping to, they have a very large committee that's been working on it, and they're helping with, with regard to things like SLOs and different forms of, of student growth. So we're, we're on board with both of those items, the, the student growth part and getting professional development with that, as well as the actual evaluation, the process, as well as this specific tool, of course, and, and how we can get better with both.
I don't have a question for you, but I did want to respond to Mrs. Bonfield. I think one of the essential elements of this evaluation, and quite frankly, the work we've been doing over the past few years with regard to instructional walkthroughs and providing meaningful feedback to staff. We did the MacPhail on Training, the five days of training for all our administrative staff. I think one of the elements of 5D and just of the culture we were creating with regard to more frequent visits to classrooms, additional feedback being provided to staff, having those collegial conversations based on really detailed rubrics about, about expectations related to engage learners, to engage in effective instructional practices, I think really is one of the most, separate from PD days where you kind of sit and get, or you go and you attend and you get it for that one day. To me, the piece that would keep the momentum moving forward on any of these models is the continuous conversation that takes place amongst professionals, whether that's teaching partners, or a principal and a teacher, or a cabinet member and a principal, because those are the pieces that continue to push our thinking, that continue to press our growth. And so I think that built-in element of this model, or really any others, that requires more continuous visits to classrooms and more regular feedback being provided, very specific feedback based on the, the software and the pivot model and the elements for each of these standards, I think will be probably the most influential way that we keep folks engaged in this process, even more so than the PD, which is important. It's important to set the stage and to refresh for things like interrate of reliability and so on. But to me, there isn't anything more powerful than, than authentic discussion of our practice and how that impacts our learners.
And that is the basis of, of the 5D tool, is, is the collaboration between the, the teacher and the evaluator, because it's supposed to be built on. because it's supposed to be built on a focus area, goals, and getting that feedback, that honest to goodness, this is what I saw. And, you know, the response of, you know, where was I going with this, or what did I miss, or how can I make it better? That's really the focus of this program and why we liked it so much. It ties dovetails very nicely into school improvement as well. I know the first time we heard, our first introduction to it by the gentleman who came in and started explaining it, I know Mrs. Ellis was very excited as to how it tied in with school improvement even. So, it, we're excited about it. Nothing's going to be easy. Nothing's without its speed bumps. But it's a learning process, and as long as we're learning together and working and growing together, you know, what more?
So, are there, I'm sorry. Are there, is there any evaluating the evaluators? I think this program, you know, there are seats for everybody at the table, but not everybody can fill every seat. Are there evaluations for the evaluator or feedback from the teachers to make sure that the evaluators are working the program like it should be and not turning it into something that's going to be detrimental to the school atmosphere? Do you know what I'm?
I think so. I think I know what you mean, and.
I can address that, too.
Oh, if you want to, go ahead.
Yeah. So, there's a couple venues for teachers to be able to provide that feedback. One is, there is, teachers are surveyed as part of the evaluation process every year. There are questions specific to the feedback that your administrator has provided you, the, you know, regularity with which instructional walkthroughs have taken place in your classroom. So, one of the ways that we get, and that's anonymous information. So, our directors get that information for each principal based on the staff that have provided that feedback to them. And then, that information is shared back with administrators as part of their evaluation model. So, that's one important component in a way that that teacher has that voice in that process.
And that's, I'm glad you brought that up because that's a little separate from what I was thinking of as well. But just built into the process, it's back, it's a back-and-forth. So, a little different than a survey of how'd you do, anonymous survey of how'd you do afterwards. The whole process is built on, after an observation, an administrator would, they call them these noticing's and wonderings, and they get an opportunity through the software to ask the teacher and say, you know, say, I noticed this, I saw this, so I was wondering about this. And that prompts the teacher to be able to give their feedback. And that starts a dialogue that should be both through the software, but more importantly, face-to-face. And we don't want to lose the face-to-face. And many of our administrators have specifically said, we don't want to get lost in the software. We want to use it appropriately, but we want to keep and maintain our face-to-face conversations with our teachers so we can talk about what's going right and what's not. So, that's a little bit of a built-in check and balance, even beyond what was discussed.
And there's one more piece beyond the survey. As part of our cabinet member's responsibility when they're evaluating an administrator, there's a requirement that they pull the evaluations that have been completed by that administrator of their staff to review those as well. That is part of the legislation, that whoever you are evaluating, that you have pulled their evaluation tools and feedback that they've given to staff as part of your review of their performance. So, there's kind of a piece on both ends, both the teacher providing the feedback, and then also the cabinet member who supervises those administrators, also taking a look at the feedback that's been given and the evaluations that have been completed. So, it comes a little bit from both ends of that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions, comments?
This is not for voting. We really just wanted to bring this to you, and I know some of this was repeat information. We felt it was important to have some public conversation about this. This is a significant part of the work we do, so.
And I think, although this is clearly set up to encourage growth and have dialogue, I think for many teachers, it still feels very high stakes. And it is, frankly, I mean, there's pressure every year to perform very well. And teachers are being looked at in a different way than a lot of them are, I think, familiar with. But I like the efforts here to, one, educate teachers on exactly how they're going to be evaluated, but two, like you said, that there's dialogue and the ultimate goal is to have better outcomes for students. And so, I like the direction we're headed in. And I'm glad that everyone is really taking their time to get up to speed. So, thank you, Phil, and everyone that's involved in that.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
Anything else, anyone? Anything else, Phil?
I'm happy, you're happy.
I'm very happy.
Fine.
Mrs. Laura, it's back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Item six, the Curriculum Committee. I'm the chair of the Curriculum Committee, and I don't have anything for the agenda today, but let me check with our chief academic officer, Mrs. Ellis. Do you have anything to note?
Nothing for this evening.
Nothing for this evening, okay? So, we'll go on to Item seven, Legislative Committee. Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you, Mrs. Laura. I do not have anything.